So I want to, I just want to mute the pencils so they can't. Call the county board to meeting. To order, we'll begin with the flag pledge.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, on this rainy morning. Roll call, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Benoit, Commissioner Heinem, Commissioner Pop, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Prove or amend the agenda. Anything to add?
We have no changes, sir.
So moved.
Second. Then motion are made, motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the county, the board chair for consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segments or public hearing. However, public comment on the agenda may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to silent. Open forum, anybody back there? Nope, nobody signed up. Consent agenda, items one and two.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Roxanne.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Before you, we have an ordinance amending our Benton County Development Code, and the ordinance adds provisions for the regulation of campgrounds and resorts within Benton County. Right now, we, we do list campgrounds and resorts as uses allowed, but the regulations with them are very, very unclear. And so what I wanted to do was go through this and make sure that it's clear, not only to staff, but to the public, to the planning commission, the county board, what it is that's required with campgrounds and resorts. The ordinance was crafted through a lot of research with the Minnesota Department of Health Regulations, statutory regulations in the Shoreland District, and then a review of other surrounding counties and what they require for campgrounds and resorts. And so I just want to preface this by saying that what I have crafted in here and what has been reviewed with the planning commission is no more strict than what is required by the Minnesota Department of Health. And so we're just asking that it be brought to us prior to being presented to the Department of Health for their licensing. We have worked on this for several months, starting, I believe, in January of this year. But prior to that, we actually had discussed it, I believe, the year prior for a couple of months, and then brought this back again for further discussion. We do have a couple of property owners who are interested in doing something like this, and so I think it was in our best interest to make sure that we have a good outline for them to, to go off of for basing their. I provided you with a really brief outline, just to give you the topics that are covered within this ordinance. Otherwise, it's, it's fairly lengthy. But what I did required a little bit of amendments to some of the definitions throughout the code, and then the addition of some definitions. So, for example, we added the definition of recreational campground, which required a modification of commercial recreation outdoor, because that's where we had campgrounds. The, the problem with having campgrounds listed in our commercial recreation outdoor is that that doesn't allow for overnight stays, so you can see how that could be an issue. So we've added that definition. We've added the definition of camp, recreational camping vehicle. Otherwise, we just had camp trailer and I, I forget what the other definition was, but it, it wasn't common terminology that we now use today. So RV vehicle and then resort, we pulled that definition out just so that it's much easier to read. And then modifying commercial MUD, MUD, and then residential PUD, MUD. The reason for that is that in statute, in the Shoreland Regulations, they refer to resorts and campgrounds as planned unit developments. They are required by statute through a conditional use permit. However, Benton County, a number of years ago, required that planned unit developments be a rezoning. And so to differentiate between the CUP that's required in our Shoreland for campgrounds and the planned unit in Benton County that requires a rezoning, we have come up with the term multiple unit development. That has been in our, in our development codes since, I, I want to say around 2008 or so. So I just needed to make sure that our terms were consistent throughout the code. There's no actual change that has any effect other than to make that consistent throughout code. We did add that the areas in which campgrounds and resorts would be allowed by a conditional use permit are the ag, rural ag, commercial, so it's the B1 and B2, so commercial, and then commercial enterprise. And this is consistent with areas, other areas throughout the state where they would allow it. Other states, or excuse me, other counties do have more shoreline commercial areas, a lot more business areas. Benton County has a lot of ag area. If we only allowed them in our business, we'd be restricted to a handful of lots along Highway 10. So, and then to correct that MUD, PUD terminology, we, we made changes throughout the Shoreland District. Again, no actual change to that section of code, just making sure that that was consistent. And then section nine, 9.28, will be our specific use standards for campgrounds and resorts. Adding, again, provisions that are already required by the Minnesota Department of Health, so that licensing. Seasonal use, which is April 1st through October 31st, consistent with a lot of other counties, because of, and generally speaking, that's because of the winterizing and the use of water and septics on those sites. Making sure that the RVs are ready to move, and that's primarily in our Shoreland District because of the potential for flooding. And then we allow for related facilities, so you've got your shower houses, your laundry facilities, things like that. Site plan and design criteria requiring, requiring grading and drainage, site survey. We've outlined setbacks, campsite minimums, which are no less than what's required by the state. The allowance of accessory structures, parking spaces will be, will follow our development code, which is essentially making sure that there's enough provided, and that's determined by the planning commission, as long as that plan that's presented seems to indicate that there's enough sufficient parking on site. Screening, making sure we're screening from roadways and other residential dwellings. Sewage disposal, toilet, shower facilities, meeting building code, having severe weather shelter, and then making sure that we have site operations or some sort of development organization, how that site's going to function. Providing us an operational plan, making sure that they have a list of overnight guests, that there is a, the ability to contact a caretaker or attendant, or have to have someone on site. Refuge, garbage, evacuation plan, making sure emergency vehicles have the ability to maneuver through the site, and then the allowance of pets on site. So with that, the planning commission did act on this. They held a public hearing on May 8th that was recommended for approval and to be presented to the county board.
Okay. So then we need a public hearing on this?
Yes.
So we will now open the public hearing, and we've heard that I'll have to wing this, kind of. We open, oh, we'll open up the public hearing. We already heard from staff. Is there any emails?
No emails, that I've not received any emails. I have not, excuse me, I have not heard from any townships or cities. This would be, this would have been sent out to them. I have not heard any concerns. The DNR is aware of the changes to the Shoreland District. They're required to be notified because it's not a substantial change, it's just a correction. There were no concerns from the DNR.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this? Or against it? Well, we'll do in favor first. Anyone in the audience that is in favor, wants to speak in favor of this? Anybody that wants to speak opposed of it? Anybody online? Final call for anybody online or in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against this. And you said there was no emails, letters, or communications?
No.
Has the department, department received anything from state agency? You said the DNR?
Yes, they were okay with the changes.
Okay. Cities, townships?
No communication from them.
Okay. No official action was taken by any townships, then?
No.
Now the county board will have time for questions of the staff and discuss it from the audience. Anything, anything to?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'm asking is about the campground down, I don't remember, Two Rivers Campground, I guess?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what it is? Are they notified of this, or they had anything to say about this?
They were not notified, would not be required to be notified, but the way that they've been operating is that they're not supposed to have overnight guests, so. But I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay. So that would be the only effect they'd actually be within the?
Yes.
Within the law, or whatever you want to call it?
Right.
Okay.
So in a sense, this is just clarification on a lot of other things. Thanks for having this conversation with me yesterday to clarify this. I looked way too in, in depth in this, you know, so.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
So it's been made in second to approve the new ordinance? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're supposed to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Monty. Review the 2026 budget?
Budget time is almost upon us. So the first thing we usually do is, is review a budget calendar and budget development guidelines. And of course, what you have in your packet is absolutely subject to change based upon your schedules and so on. So it just kind of gets us started. Here we are today, May 20th. Probably the next big date to focus on would be the week of August 11th for budget presentations. This varied. Sometimes we've done three half-days. I think last year we did one full day and then one half-day. Totally up to you and your schedules. If you want to go ahead and decide those dates today, that's great. If you want to wait, we can do that, we can certainly do that later. Just want to make sure the week of August 11th is okay for you all at some point that week. All right. Fair is over by the third, looks like, so we're good to go. No overlap with the Benton County Fair. All right. The next big date would be, as I have on here, adoption of the proposed budget levy. I show it as the second regular meeting of the month. And so my question, is that okay with you all, or should we find a special board meeting date to adopt the proposed budget levy? That's my question.
I will, I will know in a month what my September dates are.
Okay. We might change that, and that's totally okay. If you all want to have a special meeting, and I think it's great if all board members can be there for adoption of the proposed budget levy. Totally fine to have a short special meeting later in the month. So maybe leave it for now, and then we can come back and change.
And we would have the option to be online to them if we're not here?
I, yeah. That's, from a publicly accessible location, as we posted three days prior, absolutely yes, you could do it from a remote location, yes.
Okay. Good luck, right? Good luck.
I understand there's going to be, there's some changes to that remote law. I need to study and let you know what those changes are. I believe it's become more expansive, so. And I don't know when that law is effective, too. I have to check. So I just saw that in AMC update this morning. There's some changes to the remote, remote meeting law.
They're probably still working on it.
I, I, well, that AMC update said the, the, the general government bill had been approved by the House, and instead it was on its way to the governor for signature, so that might be a law. It's just an issue when it's effective, so. So it looks like, and then final budget levy adoption would be the last meeting, December the 16th. Well, I should jump back. There'd be a, your TNT hearing would be the night of December 2nd at 6:00 PM. We usually combine that with a regular board meeting. So I don't remember if we had to move it because of AMC or not.
We did one year. We did one year. Wasn't last year, the year before.
AMC seemed like it's later, so. So it looks, so it looks like the calendar's okay for now. We might make some adjustments.
AMC's the 7th through the 10th.
Excuse me?
AMC's the 7th through the 10th.
Okay. Yeah, it kind of pushed it later in the month of December, so it's not colliding with our first meeting of the month. All right. Oh, like, if we may, let's move on to the budget development guidelines. Really not a whole lot different than last year. It does state a policy objective of trying to get a levy increase of not more than 5%. That's been the board's goal the last few years, and you've, you've pretty much kept that pretty, pretty close, of keeping it to at or below 5%. So this policy basically repeats that goal. And it lets, it lets folks know that after you funded the general wage increases, step increases, health insurance, and so on, usually right out of the gate, you're at about a five or six cent, five to six percent levy increase. So it doesn't really leave a lot of room for new stuff, stuff we call policy issues, so new positions, increased spending and so on for other things. So it does let folks know that. But it does say that it's important for you to articulate your needs to the county board so they, so you know. In other words, the department needs more positions, they should let you know that. And of course, then you as policymakers can decide if it gets approved. So we kind of follow the same process as the past. We have what we call the base budget. And we work with the departments on their revenue estimates and their base budgets. And we do the payroll projections here in the administrator's office. That comes together as a base budget. It's kind of a starting point for the board. It kind of, it answers the question, well, what's it going to take to fund our current operations, a status quo, all of our existing positions, and so on and so forth. It's a starting point. And then the board can go from there. You can either reduce or go up or leave it the same. And then, again, you've got the last phase is policy issues, so that's anything that's not provided for in the base budget. So again, it might be a new position or some increased funding for some operating, operating program. And we let, we let our elected officials know that the budget presentations are their opportunity to present their salary requests to you all in August. That's their opportunity to do that. We ask the private to try and link their budget requests to our vision, our mission, vision, and values, to try and create some kind of linkage and explain that to you. That's ideal if they can do that. And that's about it, Mr. Chair. Again, not substantially different from last year. So thoughts, questions, changes?
I guess we'll see.
Yeah, so the week of August 11th, I will be gone to 13th, 14th, and 15th. But doesn't matter. Everyone just comes and requests what they want, just to let the commissioners know.
So possibly you could, we could, we could do the meetings 11th and 12th?
Yeah.
And the 11th? On the 11th, we have career solutions at 11:00 AM.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, yeah.
We have a career solution.
Who's, who's chairing it?
Me.
Can you reschedule it?
Yeah.
We're having our annual cookout for the employees that day.
What day is that, the 11th?
11th, yeah.
At what time?
11.
11 o'clock.
Oh.
And then a special meeting after that. But the 12th is wide open. The 13th, I have Wednesday. I have, I can be here in the morning on the 13th.
So we could do all day Tuesday and half-day Wednesday?
I can, yes, I can do that. Just to give you guys a heads up.
That'll actually be MICA.
Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we're done, so that we, I can zoom in to MICA.
So, so am I here maybe all day on the 12th and half-day on the 13th?
Yep.
Yeah. All day 12th. Bring your lunches.
That's usually best.
Lots of sugar, snacks, caffeine?
Yeah, yeah.
Et cetera?
Yeah, et cetera.
So, Mr. Chair, have you, are you inclined perhaps to have a motion to adopt the calendar and budget guidelines?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to adopt the budget calendar and the timeline, timelines. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.
Alrighty. All right, moving on, Mr. Chair. So we recently had a conversation with a company called Employee, Integrity Employee Benefits, and as you see in the packet, they are served as a broker for many Minnesota counties and cities. And what they do is they help bring to your organization optional benefits. For example, short and long-term disability, cancer coverage, supplemental dental coverage, supplemental vision coverage. We, we obtain a lot of those right now through Aflac or other sources. And they've approached us and want to talk to us about the services that they offer. And I think we're going to continue that conversation with them about possibly, and through the benefits advisory committee and the culture team benefits committee, about possibly using them as our broker for optional services. Well, anyway, during the course of that conversation, they said, you know, we're going to do an RFP for all of our members to look at private paid leave plans. As you may know, in the Minnesota Paid Leave Program, an employer can go with a private plan as an option to the state. It must be as good or better than the state plan. And the, these folks believe that possibly they can get better rates than you can get through the state plan. We don't know. I guess time will tell. So they invited us to participate in their RFP at no obligation. Simply, we send them our, our, our data in terms of our, you know, or the characteristics of our employees and so on, and they plug that into their RFP, and they give us a sense of what that could cost us. I guess my thought is, I don't see any harm in doing this. It's at no cost. It's no obligation. It's an issue that we can explore going with the private plans. They seem to believe that, their contention is that the private market is going to sweep up a lot of employers, and what's going to be left at the state is high utilizers, the high utilizer type, you know, employers. And that's going to drive the, the state's rate up. Again, that's, that's their, that's their projection. We're not sure. So anyway, I, I thought, I, I didn't feel comfortable committing us on my own that we'd be part of this RFP, so I wanted to make sure you were all comfortable with us being a part of it. Again, there's no obligation or commitment to be, to go with a private plan.
I think we have, Mr. Chair, I think we have to look at all our options right now.
And no harm in looking?
That's correct.
Okay, I think consensus is.
You're good? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was, you're all okay with that. Again, you can see their list. They do business with a lot of counties, and they have a very close relationship with MMA and the collaborative that we're a part of. I think that's kind of how we kind of got connected, was through MMA and their collaborative, so. All right. The last meeting, I was, my instructions were to follow up on the retiree dental issue. So here's what we did. We contacted our broker, Marsh McLennan and Associates, and they replied, this, I'm just taking this from our agenda, and they said, "We can pay post-employment benefits if the cost of such benefits was provided for in a collective bargain agreement that previously covered now-retired employees." And none of our current CBAs provide for retiree health insurance or dental. That's not included in any. So again, based upon the MMA opinion, we may not cover dental premiums for most retirees. And four of the five folks in this group were previously, and were covered by collective bargain agreements in the sheriff's office. Excuse me. You also asked me, is what would be the cost if we covered these folks through age 65? And you can see that the cost is, is estimated at $7,247. And that makes the assumption that these, these five folks would stay on single coverage, and I assume that the rate wouldn't change. So possibly, over the next few years, that monthly rate might go up, so I suppose my number might be a little low because I've assumed the same, $29.04, yeah. Lastly, we, we asked Guardian if could they make available a preventative-only plan for these folks, and we haven't gotten a response back yet. As I understand that, you know, they were concerned about, we've, we've lost our preventative. So I was, wanted to pose the question, well, can we make available a preventative plan for them? And we haven't heard yet. Beth has been following with them. Most likely, they've got to refer to their actuaries, and they've got to cost it out of what would that be for pre-65 retirees for preventative only. So that's my information for you all.
Questions or concerns?
Mr. Chair, Monty, can you just give me a review of the history? Because there's four of the five employees here that were covered under CBAs when they left. That's the way I'm reading this.
Four of the five, yes. One is, one was a non-union employee.
Bargaining agreements included that.
It did not, no, no. It did not provide for post-employment healthcare or dental benefits, no.
Okay, but it says four of the five retired employees were previously covered by CBAs.
Right.
While they were working.
While they were working, but there was no retirement in the CBA.
Sorry?
There was, while they were working, they were covered, but there was no retirement benefit in the CBA at that time.
That is correct, yes. That is correct, yep.
And was March McLennan saying that we, we can't? In your first, in your first statement, you talked about March McLennan said it wasn't covered in there, so therefore extending it wouldn't be an option?
That's what they said, yeah, yeah.
So realistically, we can't do it anyway? If that's, I mean, if that's?
I, I, they're, you know, we trust their opinion on matters. I mean, they obviously, you know, are a broker for around the state, and they've got substantial experience in this field, so.
So just to clarify, though, they don't make the decision on what the county's spending money on?
Oh, of course not, no.
So their opinion is that we shouldn't do it.
Well, they, they've said that we can't. I, I put it that way.
Based off what? If you can't, based off what?
Because the CBA did not provide for it. That's what they've said. The, the labor agreement didn't provide for it.
So I thought we were back to discussing like the months from January.
So, I thought we were back to discussing like the months from January through June.
So you already, you previously approved us, you know, oh, that's kind of a wire on the bridge, I guess. You know, those folks got the benefit of that coverage at no cost.
Okay.
And we essentially absorbed that, so, yeah.
So this is just being an additional?
Right, I think, I, again, my direction was to give you the cost to cover these folks through age 65. And it would be at least the 7247. And I made the assumption that the rate wouldn't change, but it probably will, so.
Mr. Chair, the question I have is, does this open the floodgates for the future? And in union negotiations and everything too? I mean, that's my biggest concern, is that they want to try throwing all this stuff in when we start union negotiations, you know, if they retire early, that they're going to be covered until they're 65.
And my concern is that if we made a, if we did, and I'm trying to get the history.
Correct.
If we made a commitment to do this, we need to follow through on that. If we didn't, that's a different story.
Correct, yep.
Mr. Chair, my concern is if Marsh McLennan's saying we can't do it, what's, what, what happens to us if we go ahead and just say, oh, well, willy-nilly and, and we, we approve it? We're putting ourselves out there individually.
And, Mr. Chair, and I take it that way too. We just opened up ourselves for another litigation, probably.
Oh, and I look at it like we'll probably have more people then instead of the, the few that, you know, would be right now. That would, it would probably explode or not explode, but gradually increase then.
I want to emphasize that we will follow up with Guardian and make sure that they give us some number on what a preventative-only plan would cost.
Okay.
They understand their concern, is this folks said, hey, you know, we had preventative coverage, we'd like to continue that. So hopefully, we can make available to these folks a preventative plan.
Well, with that, Mr. Chair, then maybe it's appropriate we table this until we make a decision and get the information we need. So I'll make a motion to table it.
Mr. Chair? Well, I'll second that move.
Okay, okay, now discussion?
Okay, my only concern is we only approved it through May.
The end of May, correct.
Yeah. So we almost got to do some, or.
But I, we don't have the information we need either.
And I agree, and I agree, we only approved it to the end of May, I will not approve it to the end of.
So, one, one thing that you may think about is this, let's just say, for example, Guardian can make available a preventative plan for these folks. What is your position on who pays for it?
Well, who paid for it before?
Employees did.
Then.
I'm sorry, the retirees did, excuse me, the retirees did.
I think that's where we would go back to.
Back to the same thing then, yeah.
So one way you could leave this is if Guardian can provide a preventative, we can offer to these folks at their cost. That's one possibility.
You want to include that in your motion?
Well, first of all, we shouldn't be having discussion with a table than a second, so that's my first issue. But I will rescind it.
I'll rescind mine.
If you want to get consensus on what to do, if that's the plan going forward, that if they can provide a, an opportunity for the retirees at their own cost, then you've got your consensus today and you can move on. If you don't, then. Maybe you want to have that discussion, Mr. Chair, if there's, if there's consensus on that?
I'm fine with that if they pay, if it's paid for on their own, if Guardian says we can.
I'm, I'm in the same vote.
Yep, so am I.
We're good with that? Okay.
Do you need action on it, Monty, or you just need consensus?
I'm good, yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, we'll, we'll keep on Guardian, give us the number, so, alright. Now Jeff would like to cover the Great River Greening Agreement. Alright.
Morning.
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 So, today I'm just, uh, coming forth with an agreement, uh, which I think is very beneficial to the county. It's a, it's a continuation of what we started last year with the, uh, um, the cleanup of logging with Great River Greening. Great River Greening is a nonprofit organization that specializes in forest and prairie restorations. They do a wonderful job in there. Well-renowned in this area. The agreement would be them proposing bringing $1.1 million of grant money through the Outdoor Heritage Fund as part of the Clear Water Land and Legacy Amendment through the DNR, I believe. In exchange for a matching grant from us for $34,000. So a lot like our agreement we had last year with them, what they would bring to the table is their expertise in, in, uh, in the area. And also, um, doing the RFPs, subcontracting, and a lot of the, working with us, uh, as far as coming up with the best solutions to, to take care of a lot of the invasive species we have out there, the Siberian elm, uh, the honeysuckle and buckthorn. This, this agreement would extend all the way through June 30th of '29. And it would be a lot of different, um, parts to it as far as controlled burns, um, removal of buckthorn by equipment and stuff like, um, reseeding, um, patching areas and stuff like that, getting the prairies back to natural condition, and also, um, thinning out and controlling the invasive species in the wooded areas over there. And pretty much, taking account, would be 199 acres that we have out there. So it'd be everything that been in the river excluding the area that we took care of with the logging and the homestead area, which is on the map there. So.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, this would finish the project up then?
What's that?
This would finish the project then?
Correct. Well, it would take care of us through '29.
Okay.
Um, and then at that time, we'd have to see, uh, buckthorn and a lot of invasive species are tough to manage and control, so. They, they are a great partner on this. They bring a lot of knowledge about the different aspects to, to the table and, uh, and do, they do a lot of legwork with our oversight and, uh, agreement all the way along the way.
Mr. Chair, Monty, you've got in your memo here 32,000 remaining CIP fund from timber sales, was that the total sales amount?
No, it was, it was a bit more than that. We've used, we used some for the first local match, for the first grant. And I don't remember how much, you remember how much, Jeff?
I think it was around 8,000.
Yeah, so add 8,000 to this number, so about 40 was what we had originally.
So there again, you've got 32 left and you're looking for an additional two.
Yeah.
Out of the CIP fund.
Yeah, to cover, yep, the 34.
For approval, Mr. Chair?
I'll second.
Most men made in second to approve the grant with Minnesota Greenery. And take 2,000, or the 32,000 out of the sales for timber and add 2,000 from CIP.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we've got to do our due diligence to do this, being we started this project and, and see it through, you know, for the first couple of years, at least till '29.
Especially with 1.1 million in grants.
Correct.
And they've been a good partner.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Chris Byrd.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
If you will just, uh, allow me to bring up my items, that way anybody playing county engineer bingo at home can follow along. Alright, and then I should probably make sure I am sharing this. Alright, very good. So the first item I bring before you today is the contract for our county surveyor services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, did we call the vote on the last one?
Yep.
Did I? Okay, alright, alright, I just wanted to make sure, cause I don't, okay.
Very good, okay, so, uh, the first item I bring before you is the contract for county surveyor services. So, uh, as you all know, we contract that surveyor function. That surveyor function primarily is responsible for the maintenance of the section corner monuments in our county. And then when there's any discrepancies with private surveyors and lot surveys, the, the county surveyor gets called in to, to find out where the error, if there is any errors, or where the discrepancy comes into. We also use our county surveyor to do a lot of our right-of-way plating when we have road reconstruction projects. They also review plats, development plats, um, and that's a critical function in our county. We are starting to see, it seems like in my office, we're starting to see an uptick on right-of-way plats coming in the last couple of weeks. So our county surveyor does things where they check the other surveyor's math, make sure that their survey closes and, and all those kind of things. So, uh, once again, we're chosen to contract with Jay Witstock, who has, in my opinion, provided phenomenal service for a, a lot of years. He was with, uh, different firms throughout the years and, and the last couple, uh, contract rounds has kind of done, he's on his own, he's started his own surveying company. So, it's my recommendation to, once again, contract with, uh, Jay Witstock. This current contract would, um, would start retroactively from January 1st of this year and go through, uh, December 31st of 2026. So essentially, it's a two-year contract. It is something that's in the current, uh, budget. That budget line item has remained at the same amount, about $68,000 per year for quite a few years. I can't remember the last time that that budget was adjusted. But, uh, it is a budgeted, uh, item, um, and don't anticipate those fees or, or the, that budget increasing any in the next couple of years, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, is the $2,000 bond sufficient on that? I mean, that stayed the same forever also?
Uh, yeah.
Seems a little, little light.
We do, uh, have them maintain in this section 9.3.4, a professional technical errors and omissions insurance, which is $1.5 million per claim, uh, so, and $3 million aggregate. So, to answer your question, yes, that, that dollar amount has remained the same amount for a number of years. But if there is an error that they have created themselves, we do have this, make them maintain this professional liability insurance as well.
I see their certified evidence of license gets recorded also then?
Yes, correct, yep.
Okay.
Chris, through the years with this contract, have they created the amount of hours to reach that 68,000?
Uh, it varies. Not always, not every year have we used that, that full budgeted amount. There's been years, it's been quite a few years, I think we probably went over, back when we were, uh, when, when they were actively finding section corner monuments, um, which involved excavating that, finding the original monument set in the late 1880s, uh, then recertifying that. I think there might have been a year or two that we might have overran that. Now that they're just mostly in a, a maintaining mode, it seems more often than not, we underrun that line item. Which, I mean, as time has progressed, the, the hourly fee has also increased, just like every other surveyor. But because it's more of a maintenance mode as opposed to an active remonumentation mode, our budget has been able to manage that and not ask for increases in that budget line item.
Mr. Chair, at what time are we going to be able to do this ourselves?
We would have to hire a professional licensed surveyor. That, that's the key.
That's the key, okay.
To do the re, the, the section corner certification, um, it does require somebody with a professional land surveying license.
I don't think we're going to hire him for 60 grand.
I don't think so either, I was just asking questions.
So Chris, if somebody, if the public has a question on a quarter, quarter section or section marker, can they call and then, and this will be a service that we offer then?
Yeah, yeah, that would, yeah, and that would come out of that, yeah.
It would come out of the 68,000.
Correct. So I mentioned, uh, plat reviews. That is directly offset by the fees collected, uh, at the land services desk. There is a, uh, county surveyor, a plat review fee. So that's, those costs are directly offset by those fees that are listed in our fee schedule and, or collected at the time a developer files a plat.
Do you know was Woods, was Woodstom, was Woodstock, was he the surveyor when we had all the trouble down, uh, by the lake there?
Yeah, he was, he was the same surveyor.
So they put in a lot of hours on that one?
Uh, yeah, and that was entirely different. Would I, cause I was involved very little with that. I think what, there was some kind of committee or commission.
That was the boundary, the boundary line commission.
Bounty Commission.
And that was collected through assessments, okay.
Correct, so that was addition, that would have been additional above budgeted and collected through that means.
Mr. Chair, Chris, I don't know if I missed it in here or not, but what's in place for if we meet the 68,000 and there needs to be additional work done?
Well, it would be like any other item, uh, probably come to the board, discuss that, see if we have underrun other items in our budget to, uh, accommodate that. Or maybe we get to a point, unlikely, but maybe we get to a point and we just have to say, that's all the service that we can provide for this, this budget year.
So I was, I didn't see any additional, if service is provided at an additional hourly rate.
Yeah, and we've been.
It's a flat fee.
No, no. There is an hourly rate that he charges us, and so, he's not guaranteed $68,000 a year from us.
Right, but if he goes over, we don't have anything in the contract that says it's X number of dollars per hour. He would submit billing and we would have to approve it?
Correct, yep, mm-hmm, that's how it is, yeah. Up until that point as well, he submits monthly billings, we review it.
Yeah.
We pay for the plat fees from the fees collected. We play for any work that he would have done on a construction project from the construction project budget, and then any of those, uh, services that we provide to the public gets collected to that $68,000 line.
Mr. Johnson, you're, you're saying that you would like to see something that it would be like 50 bucks an hour or whatever?
Well, I'm, I don't know that has to be in here, I just didn't see it. And if we do go over, he's going to have to provide something to us ahead of time before, oh, here's a bill for 10 grand.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. Um, and I apologize if that's not collected. We do have a list of his services and, and fees, uh, that's separate, I just, I did not, I failed to attach it to the, the document.
But in that particular case, again, if we've burned through the budget, there's going to need to be pre-approval.
Yeah.
Not an invoice to pay.
Yeah, correct, yes. And our relationship with Mr. Witstock has been really well, uh, has gone really well. I think that we could, if we get to that budget line item, we'll have those discussions that, I, I trust that he would call me and say, Chris, I'm getting calls from a lot of private surveyors, we're at our budget.
Yep.
This is, this is, he would provide me a quote of how much time and hourly fee that would cost and we could have those discussions at that.
Perfect, I'm fine with that, I just don't want to come, react.
No, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Most men made in second to approve the contract, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Okay. The next item I have for you is in regards to our CASA 29 Extension Project. As you know, we're deep into design with, uh, WSB and Associates, navigating that process since we do have that federal, uh, grant, that federal earmark for it, that does subject to the federal review process of planes. As we've got into design and shared with them all the environmental and historical work that we'd done previously, we were informed by the Cultural Resources Unit at the state that we need to do quite a bit of work to update that due to the age of those documents. Some of those documents were completed in 2007. One of those things that needs to be completed is an architectural history review and an archaeological study. They need to review structures that may have existed for greater than 50 years from today, uh, and see if they have any historical significance. There are a couple properties, uh, that were reviewed previously that now have reached that age where they're more than 50 years old, and so they got to do that. They also need to do an archaeological survey where they're going to have to dig some, some test pits and see if they find any artifacts that may have historical significance. This involves contracting with consultants that are certified by the state to do this kind of work. The, the positive news is that there is a cost share available, uh, through state aid. State aid for local projects will pay up to 80% of those costs, and we would need to come up with 20% of those. They went through their process to get proposals from consultants, uh, and recently informed me that they have selected a couple consultants. Long story short, our 20% match for those additional services is $17,163.40. And they're requesting that we consider adopting a resolution committing to that, that twenty percent match of seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents. If this is adopted today, it's anticipated, you know, within the next month, as early as the next month, a consultant could be on site doing, doing that archaeological work.
Mr. Chair, is this something that ended up being done on CASA two also with the Graham? Is it Graham or whose cemetery is there?
Uh, yeah, we did have to do it on CASA two, not necessarily because of the cemetery, but because of the proximity to water and land formations that may be indicative of ancient burial grounds.
So back to this project, were these, was this budgeted or was this a surprise?
It is a bit of an anticipated, unanticipated cost.
Because this is a, I mean, basically, this is just shy of a hundred grand for the whole thing. If we're going to be at twenty percent.
Right.
The state's putting in eighty.
Yeah.
Means this is just shy of a hundred thousand dollar deal, if my math serves me right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We're putting in the seventeen and we're putting in the eighty.
Absolutely. But I'm just saying, this isn't just a seventeen thousand dollar project. That's just our portion.
This is, we're our own worst nightmare on all this stuff. Look at all the money we spend for.
When it comes to federal funds that, that we received.
Is this federal or state?
This is federal.
So, okay, it's because we got federal money for the actual construction project that we're going to have to go through these steps. This eighty percent is state funds that comes out of the highway user tax distribution fund. That money gets set aside through there and some other sources. It was an unanticipated cost. But we had money set aside for engineering in our capital projects fund that was paying the invoices for WSB that we had hired. There, there was a little bit, after that contract was approved, there was a little bit remaining in that, that budget. I believe this seventeen thousand would eat up the remainder of that. So.
Well, once again, they got you.
Yeah.
Have no choice.
Yep. Take our federal money, but then you can spend some here.
That is correct. We've learned a lot when we received that federal money. Right, Commissioner Gabinski?
That is correct.
With that, I'll adopt resolution committing Benton County to twenty percent cost share with MinDOT for the work.
I'll second. Most men made in second to approve the resolution for the Benton County's twenty percent share with MinDOT for the work. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
All right, we're just moving right along with agreements. The next item I bring before you is a fund exchange agreement between Benton County, the state of Minnesota, and Wright County. What has happened is Wright County received some Hzip funding, very similar to what we received for our roundabout project on, at twenty-nine and one. Wright County and through their process and progress in the project are not going to be able to use the, the federal funds before the end of the state fiscal year as, as required for, for that source of funds. So they approached me and said, we, we see that you have a federal project programmed for this current year, same source of funds, highway safety improvement program. Would you be interested in a fund exchange? And what that would be is, we would accept their additional federal funds, but then we would transfer some of our state aid funds to them, dollar for dollar. So they still have to meet a commitment to construct that project in which they received that federal grant for. But this does give them some allowance to take more time to develop that project and not lose that, that federal funding. For us, it has a zero fiscal impact. We were going to use some state aid funds to come up with the local match for the project and a little bit of sales tax for it. So. We will receive additional federal funds to go towards our roundabout project. In turn, we would transfer our state aid funds, once again, dollar for dollar. So it's a net zero change. It really benefits more, Wright County to allow them more time to develop their project and not lose their, their project funding. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chris, aren't we shooting ourselves in the foot? Because we're not technically ready with the, with the poll and everything like that.
Not necessarily. We're still committed to get that project out for bid in June, and we're going to do some construction this year. What we, what we going to do is build a bypass road, which is part of the plans. So when that intersection becomes closed, villages of Creekside still have ingress and egress. That's what we will get accomplished this summer. And then the project will be suspended until Excel gets their, their poll out of the way. So we, we have a commitment to, to do some work still this, this summer to keep that actually one point one million dollars of federal funds we already have.
And that will, that will supplier, our agreement will be okay with that?
That, that, then we meet those requirements to get the project authorized and incur some project costs. It gets kind of goofy because the state fiscal year is a different ending date than the federal fiscal year. So we have to get our project authorized before June thirtieth, which means we get approval from St. Paul to go out for bids. We need that approval before June thirtieth. Then we need to incur some costs before the end of the federal fiscal year, September thirtieth, to show that, yeah, we, we are using those federal funds and we need to keep them, not to sweep those away to some other, some other agency.
Mr. Chair, so Chris, just to be clear, no issue taking federal funds from Wright and swapping our state aid money? How will the state look at our use of state aid going forward if that money gets swapped out?
Uh, to them, it's no, no, no difference. State aid gets allocated to Benton County, just like it normally would. They're the ones that actually drafted this, this agreement. The state agency agreement has no impact to our future allocations because it essentially went to a state aid project, just happened to be in, in Wright County.
Okay.
As opposed to Benton County.
Chris, if we do this swap, is there a a timeframe commitment for Wright County for their project then?
Yeah, the, the timelines are a little bit more, more loose. But yeah, they still have to build that same project that they were going to use these federal funds on. So.
Two years, three years? I, I didn't read it in the contract, so I'm just asking this question.
Correct. I, I do not know the answer to that. And you're correct. It does not say that in our agreement.
At that point in time, shouldn't we have that in our agreement too?
Well, it has.
Swapping funds, we have to make sure we're committed to use this Hzip grant. Okay?
Yeah.
And now we're just telling them, well, we'll give you our state aid money with no timeframe.
But the risk is on Wright County. Um, at this point, yeah, you're right. Our agreement says that we have timelines to still build our project that we're accepting those federal funds on. And, and that's why I think there's little risk to us because if we didn't have those additional federal funds, we'd be using our state aid funds at this time. If we give Wright County state aid funds and they don't build the project, they're assuming all that risk and any implications from the state for not meeting their commitments. As long as we meet our commitments.
We're good.
We're good. We should be good. That doesn't preclude us from applying for Hzip again in the future and shouldn't affect our, I shouldn't say shouldn't, it will not affect our future annual allocations of state aid funds. So.
So accepting this Hzip grant, like you just said, we in turn, if we want to apply for another Hzip grant in a year or two, it won't affect us.
It, it would not. No. Actually, it, it would actually look beneficial to us because we were able to actually accept more and actually deliver the project as promised.
Okay.
So I think the risk, once again, the risk is on Wright County. Because they, now, you could argue, well, they, they accepted a grant that was supposed to be constructed in twenty twenty-five and they end up having to swap it away. It actually, in a way, kind of makes us look better that we took on others and still delivered the project.
Right. On, you know, a couple of things. As one, we got the blessing from MinDOT to do this, right?
Yeah.
Other part is, it kind of keeps that county coordination going.
Sure.
You know, I mean.
From a state aid level, they, they actually encourage this because it lessens the workload on them. That's now we've taken away one federal project that they have to provide oversight on.
Okay.
We, we've done things in the past. It's been several years that we've done this. But we've actually done a fund swap between ourselves, where we've swapped funds from like CASA three to CASA two or vice versa where we, and they like that because then we're combining federal projects. That reduces the little bit of oversight work that they have to do. And as long as, long as it's a zero fiscal impact, it's kind of a win-win for folks.
How many dollars? I don't know if you said, how many dollars are we talking about?
So it would be seven hundred and fifty thousand. They were, they're building a roundabout just like us. They, they had gotten Hzip grants, so they got the max seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then we would give them, once it's, once a grant is executed, or the app, I mean, grant, the contract or agreement is executed, state aid finance takes care of all the funding. And then our account, Missy, will track those costs and make sure we get what's owed to us.
Do they have Excel energy in their way too or not?
No, no, they had some right-of-way issues though as well. So. Yeah, sure.
Yes.
So here's my question that I want just a little clarification on. So we're giving them state aid in, in swap for federal. And with that federal, we would be on a timeline with our state that we're giving them. They are not on a timeline.
They are on a timeline. I just don't know what those deadlines are. So their agreement has probably some different language. It says that they are giving up their federal funds in exchange for state aid. And they will have some sort of commitment to still build that project within a, a certain timeframe. I'm just not sure what that is. But you're right, if they don't bid that, build that project, because when we've been in similar situations where we've swapped away federal funds, and, and this is probably ten years ago that we did that, we gave our federal funds to somebody else. Our state aid engineers were on me to say, Chris, you gotta, we, we want to see plans for this project and know that you're going to do it. I just don't, at this time, don't know what that deadline is. But that's something I can certainly find out and bring that, that back if that's.
What, what is our deadline on the federal funds?
Well, still, before June thirtieth, get that approval to author, and we're already on that track. We just haven't got the, the the final stamped signature on our plan set to, to do that. So we're really close to getting that.
If we don't?
Well, if we don't, then we're risking almost two million dollars of federal funds at this, this point. And so we're not going to let that, that happen, just say. So we're too far in the process at this point to not, not get that, let's, let's say. So.
And do we have a deadline as to when those federal funds need to be depleted?
Yes. So we have a, a deadline in, in this, in this agreement, five years. So, well, the agreement stays in place within five years. But in our normal agency agreement with MinDOT for federal funds, once a project is authorized to go to a bid letting, we normally have a timeline of like two years to get those projects' funds spent from the date of authorization. So even before accepting these federal funds, we, we were on the clock to, to get something done. Which is even with the Excel Energy roadblock, let's say, we were going to, we were committed to do some construction this, this summer.
Issue with the four hundred grand grant from?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, no issues with the appeal grant. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Chair. I'll adopt the attached, attached resolution entered into state of Minnesota agreement number one zero six zero zero four five and authorize the board chair to sign it.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Most men made in second to accept the exchange agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Very good. Good discussion, good questions. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. How about some good news? So as you know, we have two bridges that are, that are actually out for bid right now to be replaced. County Road fifty-one southeast of town here and then County Road twenty-two up on the west branch of the, the Rum River. We had received federal money to construct those. And as most federal grants go, they were capped at a maximum of eighty percent of the construction project. Well, we were recently informed, we received this, this letter from state aid saying that our projects were eligible and that we received state local bridge replacement program money to come up with that local match. So now on County Road fifty-one, we were getting five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars of federal money. Now we're getting additional three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars of state money to go towards that local match. That only leaves us about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars now that we need to come up with the local match to get that bridge completely built. As opposed to almost a half a million dollars that we were just for that one bridge. Likewise, on twenty-two, Bridge twenty-two, we were getting about six hundred and three thousand, almost six hundred and four thousand dollars of federal money. Now we're getting another four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of state money to go towards that bridge, leaving only about ninety-two thousand dollars of CASA money that we need to come up with that, that project. So. In the great circle of life, it seems like money is going in a circle. We're given, we just approved seventeen thousand dollars to state aid to go do some additional work. But here we are, we're getting almost eight hundred thousand dollars of state money to go towards.
I wondered why there was such a smile on your face with the second.
That's almost another bridge.
Yeah. Uh, exactly. That, that's what I look at it. We're in a mode now where we've got some structures that are needing to be replaced that are now actual bridges. Where up to this year, we were doing just a lot of box culvert replacements. And now we're getting into some larger structures that are going to require actual bridge placements, which are, as you look at these costs, they're running about a million dollars a pop. So. Yeah. So that was, that was some good news. No additional work at this time that we needed. Those projects are advertised on our online bidding system. We should be opening bids in June for those, hopefully doing some construction the end of this, this summer. So.
Nice.
Getting those, those built. So, oh, then there's just a, a map showing those, just refresh where those, those structures are. They're load posted and restricted right now, so they, they needed to be, due to their condition and things. So. All right.
What's the schedule for those, Chris?
Should be this summer. We open bids in June. I think we got at times that's, we should be able to hit the second board meeting in June for approval of those bids, contracts approved and get the contracts signed in July, maybe end of July. We're closing it down and starting to remove the, the old structures. So. But there will become a time when those roads are closed and we have detours in place to, to detour around those.
And about how long are the projects?
They're about sixty days apiece. So some of that working can, can happen concurrently. You know, once you get one structure removed, that crew could go up to the next structure. They're going to be tied together, start removing it while there's another crew on the other bridge starting to do the, you know, the other prep work, driving, piling and those kind of things. So we're hoping that maybe we're down to about maybe a hundred days or just under to get both of them completed.
No right-of-way issues in either area?
Nope, that's already been taken care. We've got all the right-of-way acquired and, and we've met all the other federal requirements for, for those structures. So. We have stream mitigation that we already got approved from taking those from the local road wetland replacement bank. So. We're clear of that.
They found some credits, huh?
Yeah, we, yeah.
They find them.
In a piggy bank.
Well, I think we fortunate that we, we were able to pick up some scraps because we had very low replacements needed. So. I mean, we're talking about tenths of an acre on each one that we were needing to mitigate the stream impacts. So.
Wow. Is that two to one also?
That is two to one. So you impact.
So, hundred thousand dollars an acre. You're going to use two tenths, you said?
Yeah. But because we were able to find, you know, a few tenths of acres in that, in our bank service area, that's no out-of-pocket expense for us.
All right. Thanks for the good news for once.
Yeah.
Nice ending.
Yeah.
Very good ending.
Well, if you allow me a few more minutes.
Oh, boy.
For an engineer update. Couple of things. One of them, I want to talk about our highway department parking lot. You know, we've opened bids on Batuminus projects recently and got some really good prices. We got some scoping estimates from those contractors and we would, we would do a lot of the work ourselves with our maintenance crew as far as grading and stuff. But to get that paved, we would need to go out for sealed bids. But we, we got some scoping estimates in the range of two hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred thousand dollars to repave our whole, our parking lot. And I just wanted to mention that to the, the board, to see if there's any, uh, support to maybe going ahead and moving forward with that. Like I said, it's over the municipal contracting law of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we'd have to do a sealed bid process to actually get actual bids to do that. What we're hearing from our bidders though is they're still hungry. There's, there's not a lot of work maybe on the commercial side that they were once picking up. And they're still looking for opportunities to pick up work for their crews and, and stuff. So.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. Chris, we originally had talked about that through capital improvement dollars. Um, and is there any opportunity for change order on existing road project to add in that paving quantities to that? Uh, I know we got pretty favorable numbers, what, from Knife River for?
I think.
Sixty-six?
We, we probably could. It would be a different unit price. Um, as paving contractors, uh, tell us, you know, long stra- straight roads is a different, uh, unit price in paving parking lots where you got a lot of back and forth and usually a lot more handwork and stuff. So. I think best to keep it clearing, we would look for one of our, uh, local project, uh, like our County Road sixty-six bids that we just opened up. If you wanna go with the change order route of adding that to that, that current contract. So.
I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking them what that unit price will be.
Sure. We could, we could certainly do that. So we asked them to look at the project as a standalone project. A couple of them, that's where we got. We got a range of about two seventy-five to three hundred thousand. So.
And do you recall, was it a couple of years ago when we looked at doing parking lots through capital improvement? Do you remember what our estimates were at that time?
So we had planned, in twenty twenty, we had let a project, um, to do all that. And I think there was more work in there. The, the cost was a little bit higher. I think we were closer to maybe about half a million dollars, but I think. I think to make it work and to capitalize on just these, these really good Batuminus prices, our maintenance crews are willing to do a lot of that, that prep work with our equipment in our trucks and stuff. So.
So are we looking at capital improvement or do we have budget dollars for some of this?
Well, if that's something, we have considerable savings in our annual patching budget. So we have about four hundred thousand dollars in just savings from our, our road patching budget. And in the past, that had been, uh, expressed that that budget should be reserved for doing, you know, our roads out there that the public uses. And, um, that is an option. Um, uh, if the board is supportive of that, we could probably use that from our, um, our patching budget this year. So.
Is it, Monty, is it an option hypothetically that we could use some of those budget dollars and capital improvement dollars? Mix them?
The only, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would say is, is we've heard from the public before is if we're taking these dollars for certain things, we should keep them for certain things.
Sure. I'm just trying to come up with options.
No, exactly. And, and I look at it this way. I think Chris and, and them guys came up with a great plan. We know it needs to be done. And it's like anything, if we don't do something, it's gonna completely deteriorate to the point where it's gonna hurt, i- i- impair our own equipment by plowing snow and everything like that.
Well, that's this last winter, just even clearing our own parking lot. We, we were pulling up chunks of our, our pay, our parking lot. And we've got pretty sizable puddles now of potholes, uh, where water stands and sits there.
Just from a dollar perspective though, what I'm hearing is we're about two hundred grand back from what we originally thought it was gonna be for capital improvement.
I understand that's because they're gonna do some of the work yourselves.
That's right. I think earlier quotes and estimates was the contractor doing a lot of the shaping and things like that. Um, there's things like our fence. Uh, we would need to replace that. The, the posts have pushed out of the ground because of the frost. And it makes it easier for paving too, if that's just, those are clear and then the paver can make.
Our guys can bring in our own material that we own out of the pit, right?
Correct. That's if we need to bring in material. We've got our own source of material that we can bring in. Our operators could use our motor graders to shape it and get that to drain, hopefully a little bit better. We may have to cut some swales in through the grass to get the water to get to the, the, the stormwater ponds a little easier.
They looking at putting some fabric down too?
We may, yeah. Um, uh, because we have poor soils underneath, but thin gravel we have out there. So.
Is there anything in the county that would take a step back while we're doing this?
Well, I wanted to bring it up because you brought up a good point, Commissioner Kowalski, about the, the capital funds and staying true to what we've committed to the public and stuff. So, uh, I don't want it to perceive as a diversion of funds by any means or anything like that. So that would be the concerns I just wanna vet out and, and make sure we address.
I'm talking more on the labor standpoint right now. Like, is there anything that, what they should be doing?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, and that's where our maintenance superintendent is telling me now's a good year to do that. So with our current workload, the current list of like pipes he needs to replace, roads that need to be gravelled, we believe that we could, we could still manage, manage all that. So.
Without overtime and everything involved in it?
Sure, certainly. Yeah. That is always a concern of ours to, to manage that. So.
That's my concern.
Right.
And to be truthful though, I mean, there wasn't a lot of overtime paid out or earned this winter. Like we normally would in a typical, uh, winter.
When you say be truthful, you weren't lying before, were you?
Do you, do you have enough projects available to use up the four hundred thousand in the budget for patching? I mean, we've got roads that obviously need the work. What's gonna happen to those dollars?
Yeah.
Roll over?
Are they gonna go to fund reserves or are they gonna be?
Unspent, they would remain in Fund thirteen, the highway fund, if they were, if they're unspent. Yep.
They will get spent at some point, yeah.
Yep.
I just don't want them to magically disappear.
No, no, that would not occur. No.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we got, we got a need. We got funding avenues. I think, I think we let them.
Prices, good prices.
And, and our employees are willing to do the grading and everything else to fix all of that.
We, we ask people to come to us with solutions. That's exactly what they did.
Yep.
Yep. They came with a solution to get it cheaper.
So, uh, okay, we'll explore a change order route. Um, certainly before any commitments are made, I'll bring that back to the board for, so you get some hard numbers and things like that. So.
Mr. Chair, I think it's, is it the consensus that we'd use capital improvement money then?
We can figure out that mechanism later on. Maybe it might be a mix.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, mix might not be bad because we got good bids.
All right.
Okay.
Well, good. Uh, expect more in future. Quickly before I go, when we get to committees of the whole, just wanted to throw out an idea and we can discuss it later at that time too, about a possible road tour. If that's something the board would like to do, uh, in the coming months. So when it comes time to setting committee of the whole, we can discuss it at that time.
Okay.
And then if you think I've talked enough, I will gladly sit down.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Commissioner, meeting updates?
Mr. Chair, maybe could I, could I ask you to recess?
Sure, we can do that.
That'd be great.
Let's recess and go to ditch authority. Turning it over to Commissioner Johnson.
All right. I'll call our ditch authority meeting to order. Uh, we've been through our roll call if everyone's present. Approval amendments to the agenda. Chris, do you have any changes?
I have no changes. So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second, uh, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose is carried. Move on to consent agenda. Approve or amend the ditch authority meeting minutes of May sixth, twenty-five.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve those minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose is carried. Chris, presentation of recent inspections of CD nine and CD fourteen.
Yeah, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So I bet you didn't know that when we hired a ditch inspector, that we hired a pilot as well. So. No, uh, if for those of you that haven't met, uh, Adam Ritchie is our new environmental technician slash ditch inspector. So.
Congratulations.
Can't wait to see you at all the meetings.
Roll up your sleeves.
But, uh, no, I kid about the pilot's license. He was not a pilot before coming here, but in about a week's time, he studied up and took the test and is now a licensed drone, uh, pilot, right? Or what do they call them? Unmanned aerial? Whatever. I don't know. But he does have, uh, his license and certified. Um, there's actually quite a few regulations. Because of the St. Cloud Airport, um, we are limited to how close we fly. So that does impact ditches like County Ditch ten and County Ditch eleven. Adam was just informing me this morning that he did the approvals through, was it through the FAA actually?
Yeah, the FFA, um, they created this online, um, database that allows you to apply for, um, approval to fly in designated airspaces. Um, if you're below four hundred feet, it's kind of an automatic approval that gets sent to us. But if you go above four hundred feet, um, above ground level, then, then the St. Cloud Airport then kinda, kinda has their say.
Yeah. So, uh, just something to be aware of that we not supposed to just fly it everywhere and whenever and, uh, at all locations. Recently, Adam has completed, uh, a drone inspection of ditches nine and fourteen. And that's what, uh, he collected that, uh, video, um, on our drone. Um, and then brought the videos back and edited them, um, on his computer. I'm hoping to pause this till we're ready to talk about it. Um, and we've pieced together just, uh, some videos here. And so that's what this is, just an informational, uh, video of our, our ditches that we recently repaired. So the first one we're gonna look at here is CD fourteen. And we're gonna start at the upper, uh, end, the very upstream point of that. Uh, I mean, once again, let me make sure I'm sharing this. I don't know how to. Share this. If that is up, if it's over here, is it being, is being shared? Oh, there we go. Very good. Now we're sharing it for those following along at home. Okay, CD fourteen, we're gonna start at the upper end of it. Um, now this is, we are at, we're gonna probably go faster than what it, this video player is a little bit.
It's just gonna be the main trunk or you're doing branches too?
We, we did all of it. So, um, I was gonna try to play it at like one and a half speed. So. But, um, yeah, Adam's kinda highlighted some things that you could tell from the air. Like we just pointed out that there was a log in there. Is that obstructing flow or something? Maybe that's something that we need to go out and actually get boots on the ground to inspect further. So we're, we're kinda following the flow of water. We're going downstream with it. Hundred seventy-fifth Avenue is where that, that township road is. Um, from here, you can kinda see spoil piles. Um, you get a good indication of the, the condition of the ditch.
This was my first time flying the drone too. Um, so it might be a little choppy. We had a little bit of technical, uh, difficulties, um, with kind of the recording. So it may look a little choppy, but, um, I promise you that future inspections will be even better. So.
I'll tell you, it looks a lot better than anything we had before.
Sure does.
Things like this.
Well, that's a tree in a buffer strip, huh?
That's the one you've been saying needs to go.
Yeah, I know. I remember hearing, at least Chris, talk about, oh, you guys, um, talked about the buffer strip and preferring no trees in there. So. Whenever I saw one, I, I tried to highlight it on the inspection video.
Get rid of those lines. Electrical.
So this is in that area that one of the concerns that we heard was that there was a belief that water was flowing the wrong direction. Now, we can see that there's water in the ditch. Um, but I don't believe it's flowing in the wrong direction. I think we see water where we didn't see before. This area right here was the, we're about ready to come on, but this was the vegetation management area that we first had skipped. Uh, and that's why you don't see as much vegetation established on that spoil pile as you do in other locations. So now we can see that that's clear and open. Um, water's flowing through it like it should. Here we are at the, the next township, township road where we start and, and then.
Is that Ninetieth right there?
I think that is Ninetieth, yeah. So, things like that, which is what I'm hearing from other ditch authorities that's sometimes common with new repairs. You can see some erosion. Here we're getting to that next vegetation management area where we had skipped first to avoid, uh, wet, wetland impacts. But now we see that that's open and the spoils are placed there on the right side of the, the video. So, uh, other than some erosion, we saw a log in there. Haven't seen, in my opinion, seen any things that's really restricting flow. There's that other, uh, vegetation management area. Seems to be open.
That tree's gotta go.
Yeah, we got another tree there. I could see here, it looks like there might be a deer stand or something, or something else in that tree, a ladder or something. So. A lot, that's what we heard from the contractor during construction was like, Chris, do you want me to remove trees with deer stands in them? So we do need to go back to land.
Isn't that the one we left because it was deer season?
That might've been one of them, yeah. So. Here's Highway twenty-three where we cross under. Now we're kinda going backwards. We just saw the old railroad grade with the pipe under that. So. We're still traveling downstream, but now we're looking upstream as opposed to looking downstream. So.
I'm not traveling the drone backwards. Um, it's just the way I recorded it. I just reversed the video. So it kinda stays, you know, um, kinda the same. So.
Now you stayed on the gravel road and just went the whole mile, right? Or a mile?
It depends kind of on the, the vegetation of the spot. The drone can get about a quarter to half a mile, um, until it starts to lose signal and then the video gets all choppy. So what I do previous is I look at that overview map and kinda spot kinda areas where I think the drone would be able to reach. And all of CD fourteen, I was able to reach without having to go, go off the, the roads. So.
So here we are, we're on branch six of fourteen. So we're branch six, uh, starts, um, which, yeah, traveling backwards, but following downstream. You know, uh, appears the channel seems to be open. Uh, this was about two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
And, and we had received some rain.
It was a good quarter inch of rain, probably a day or two prior to these videos. So, um.
I think this is great to maybe pass on to townships and show that, hey, we, we are watching this stuff.
One of the things we've discussed too is that, uh, you know, probably haven't yet, but posting this on our ditch page on the, the county website. So.
Does this go into the DB system?
Um, we haven't uploaded this or, or know how to upload videos into the drainage DB system. But, um.
Yeah, I've uploaded my inspection reports, which is just a Word doc or a PDF that says this is what I did, um, today. And those are in drainage DB. We haven't, I haven't talked to Chris yet about putting the videos there yet.
Well, the other area this is gonna be helpful is in August when we do annual ditch assessments, maintenance assessments.
Yeah. Um, and, and Adam has been systematically going through ditches. Uh, you said you've got about all of ten flown now?
Ten is done and the video is done. I just, obviously these videos get kinda long, so I didn't wanna make you guys sit here for too long. But, and obviously you don't have to watch this whole thing. But, uh, it's just a good example. Obviously we'll have this in our documents for future inspections. I hope to do this maybe every year or if there's a citizen complaint, obviously could do that. And it's just a nice reference point for us in the future to see if, see if anything is changing. See if maybe there's some more erosion in twenty twenty-six or, or if it's better or worse.
You seen some clumps in the middle of the ditch back there? Do we go and get those and take them out or?
I think that's a, that's a policy decision. Um, uh, we can. Nothing says that we have to. Nothing says that we, we can't. I mean, it's all part of our maintenance policy for maintaining that ditch. Um, you know, well, we'll see as, as time progresses through the summer. I wouldn't expect to ever see the ditches dry. I mean, they are ditches. I think one thing that we need to be cognizant of is like, are we able to contain the water within the ditch? Or do we have some kind of obstruction?
Is that vehicle doing?
They were flying backwards. I don't know what they were doing.
But if we get to a point where that obstruction is backing up water and the water is escaping the banks of the ditch, then I think there's something we certainly should be addressing. And, and the reason why I say that is because we've heard a lot of concerns with costs lately. These are ones that we just repaired. Uh, more actions or additional actions, um, most likely will result in additional costs. So. That's Ninetieth Street. That's the, the, the one where you've had.
Right there is where you dump the UTV in by the piles.
That's right. That is exactly right. Where Representative Schultz was able to visit with us for.
No, I'm familiar with where we were at. Still trying to get the.
It wasn't muddy though.
Still trying to get the money. Still trying to get the money off, yeah.
Weren't you in there too?
Yeah.
So there's things that, yeah, it's amazing what you can see just from the air, uh, without even just being on the ground, but, um.
Was this about a hundred feet up?
Yeah, um, depending how far away I was, um, from the drone, I had.
So that's a field crossing?
Um, so I tried to start off.
Doesn't look like it's huge though, does it?
And then kind of when I'm far, on C D nine, it was kind of harder to reach some of the ditch areas. So I did get closer to the three hundred, four hundred foot, but, but this one was nice and I was able to stay pretty low.
You did a nice job. These drones are not easy to run.
No, I appreciate that. It was, Chris allowed me to test it kind of around the, around the highway department buildings for a while. And then I kind of watched some videos on people who have the same drone. The test kind of that Chris was talking about, it was kind of intense. You have to know a lot about airplanes and, um, airports, um, for the test, but, um, I passed that.
What, what airport did you have to go to?
I went to Rush City.
Cause our, St. Cloud Airport could not proctor the exam.
And then those cows, it was kind of funny going by those cows because they looked up like a UFO was about to come, you know, and so.
Is this the branch going back through Schumachers back to Ninetieth?
We're about to reach Schumacher's property, which is right to the right of this.
Okay.
Well, it's definitely a different perspective from, because Chris and I actually used the, the A T V and did a little bit of, uh, by Mark Radka's property. We, we drove a little bit and it's just, there's just two different perspectives, the on-ground and then the air.
And this, this, I remember distinctly this branch. You didn't even know that branch existed until we cleared those trees out there, so. So now back on the main, um.
Yeah, this is actually where Chris and I walked this to see the, that culvert that's about to come up. Do you remember that walk?
Yeah.
It's a very muddy walk.
Yeah, we were, I was, let's say I'm a little more cautious on where I take the side by side now, into the mud or not, so.
And you can kind of see some increased sediment flow on the bottom, whether that just be different types of soil or there's some more runoff of sediment.
That's the one that was left in deer hunting.
Yeah, that's the one that the landowner was very resistant and, and came here and spoke and pleaded to, to have re- remain, so.
Yeah, most of these, um, I'm not saying they need to be fixed. Um, it's just kind of more of a reference points for, for future inspections to see if the erosion gets worse or if it kind of stays the same, then, um, we can determine it from there.
Yeah, we're getting almost to the bottom of fourteen now. Not too far from it, but this is the section where the landowner, you know, was maintaining it themselves all those years and I think was, you know, upset that now we come through and do a repair and they're still subject to the assessments just like everybody else, so. I mean, and that's reflected in our repair plans when you look at the amount of sediment that would need to be removed. Through this section, very little needed to be removed to get it back to the correct, uh, grade, so. And then this is our, our county road fifty-two, so.
I like where it shows us discoloration to the sediment moving.
Yeah, we watched the C D nine video after that. You'd notice a kind of a lot more of that, that issue, so that might have to be taken into consideration. You know, I'm not sure if you all know, but the numbers on top, um, we didn't really explain it too well, but that just shows the kind of feet, how far it is away from the starting point. Um, so branch one, this is, um, basically a hundred and twelve thousand feet away from the start of branch one. And it just kind of, it just kind of shows and helps Chris and I when we look at the profiles, we can kind of see where exactly this, this video was taken.
So it's one of those things, we do have as-built, um, survey, so we have elevation shots. Uh, they might be every two hundred feet, uh, or so. So we know, once again, if we see something on aerial, we can approximate this station number, as we call it, as engineers, and go to the plans and find out what that elevation should be at that point. We could take our surveying equipment out there in the future, uh, and see if it, you know, if it's at that, if it's deeper, has it eroded deeper or has sediment accumulated and, um, the, the bottom elevation is not where.
Was there really only one spot where there was erosion off the outlet?
Yeah, um, at least for C D fourteen.
Yeah.
Um, C D fourteen was the first one I did and I, I noticed it was, um, obviously I don't want to say perfect, but it was actually pretty, pretty good. C D nine on the other end, you'll see that there is a little bit more erosion around the outlets.
At, at that point in time, do we just go in and put rocks and everything around that? Cause that's gonna, that erosion's gonna keep going.
I think we have to have a discussion in the future about if we're just gonna put rock in our outlets.
Just do it. I know we had a lot of discussion about that early, early on.
The problem is, is we can't even, the, the, nobody wants to pay for the ditches the way it is. And that's adding costs again, it, I.
I get that.
Yeah.
I, I get that.
Unless we're in the right of way of the highway, then it goes back to the highway.
Uh, uh, that's true. That's something that, yeah, goes back to the highway, whether it's a township or the county. We would do that, but these, one of those erosion spots was a private field crossing.
Yeah.
Where we saw the scour hole in the.
And that could be something we, we recommend that they do, or we make it, you know, a private cross.
Oh, you're either going to pay for it then or you're going to pay for it when you go back to fix it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're still in, branch one's a pretty long branch.
I don't think there was anything else. If you want to skip to the C D nine, you can.
All right.
So, Chris, is this something we should, we should go back and do thirteen and fifteen to see how bad we are there after these years?
Well, for sure. I, I, I completely agree with that. Uh, I've just instructed Adam to kind of go in order, of which we've, uh, been working on those. Nine and fourteen are of concern right now since we have the contracts open. Ten was next because we have that repair petition, um, out there that we need to eventually respond to with a finalized repair report. So that's just kind of how we've been prioritizing it, but I certainly think, yeah, maybe over the course of the summer, we go look at thirteen.
Couldn't you imagine what we're going to be amazed at if we go out there and fly them, the way it's going to look today versus?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
It's going to be just a disaster.
Is ten in front of twelve?
Correct, yes, we received it, yeah, and in the order of which we receive repair petitions, ten, we received that repair petition first, so.
Yeah, you guys will notice a lot on this one. It stops a lot more. I noticed a lot more erosion of, of the banks. And that might be because obviously C D fourteen drains into this one, so it's going to have more water. Um, maybe after this one was cleaned, um, it could have been a heavy rainfall that, that caused some erosion. There's just a lot of different variables that may have caused this, but here, you know, there's some erosion on that culvert. Not as bad as some, but there's, I still pointed it out for future reference.
This is, is this a site where we took about six feet of sediment out?
Correct, yeah, that's coming up here on the right side of the ditch up here, um, where we had this, the, the large spoil piles that we came back and.
And on the left there was where all the rock were.
Correct, yep, mm-hmm.
Oh, where they put a rock pile?
Your great-great-grandfather did that.
Yeah, um, things I, I do like, I mean, yeah, we see.
He's got a name.
Bet he does.
We do see, you know, at least there's vegetation growing, um, that's.
All that sediment flow goes a long ways. Wow.
Yeah, and you see it kind of pretty bad at the end of this ditch when it goes into the, um, St. Francis River, I believe. Um, but you'll see.
So in, in this particular spot, Chris, if you could stop it for a second, this is the same issue we have over on C D twelve and County Road eighty-five where the culvert runs perpendicular to the road and then it causes washouts on that side, just like it did there. Because the centerline culvert wasn't put in with the ditch system.
Correct, yeah. Um, now this is something that we'll probably have to take ownership as a highway department and reinforce that because at this point, we're not going to tear up this road, this, because this is, this is a concrete culvert. It's a large concrete culvert. It's in really good shape. Years ago, probably better suited to line this up, which obviously results in a lot longer culvert, a lot larger excavation. Historically, we come across that a lot. Uh, the more economical route was to do the shortest distance between two points is a straight line, so do it ninety degrees.
But what happened on County eighty-five is then you had to come back with riprap and keep adding rock to the washout area on the east side of eighty-five.
Oh, on C D six?
C D twelve.
Oh, okay.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm.
Cause that's the same problem, actually worse. It takes a very hard right hook.
You're right, so. At this point though, in this particular location, it's probably more cost-effective for us right now is to just put, uh, riprap here along that. Um, things that like, maybe we can use, uh, screen some pit run from our own pit as opposed to buying shot, you know, blasted riprap.
I think my point is when we get to C D twelve's repair, we're going to need to look at that culvert.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, and look at.
We need to align it with the ditch.
Sure. That was the location right there that, yeah, we, we noticed that there was no, um, side inlets cut into the, the spoil piles.
Is this the one you're waiting for the landowners?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right at that corner is right there is the landowner who we got a complaint from.
I mean, when you're out on, the one thing, it's hard to tell from the air is the height of those, uh, spoil piles. At that particular location, spoil pile is relatively, uh, short, one, maybe two feet max at its, its heights. Where some of these, like he, like we, we know, we had six-foot tall spoil piles, so.
We're going to get to a point in this video, um, where I wasn't able to drone the entire, um, ditch, um, just because of the drone limitations. So it's going to say I cut, I cut, I had like four hundred feet, so, um, I just wasn't able to reach it from one of the roads.
But over time is, it streams meander and stuff. Some of this is not too surprising. I'm actually kind of surprised that we don't see more in there as it comes around the corner.
Remember C D twelve?
Oh, yeah, cause now you can see our road construction project on Kasaw seven there.
This is coming up to seven and fifty-one. Is that area right there where we did that, had to do that mitigation?
Right.
And then your box culverts.
Yep, and so we extended these.
Yeah, like Chris said, it is a lot of the road and it starts to do the sharp turns, obviously, but.
So you don't get all the way to the St. Francis on this one?
I do, I do.
Oh, you do, okay.
I just, I just had to skip, um, I think it might be coming up here shortly.
And I think, yeah, we, obviously we had a survey done before we did the repair. Here you see some meandering. I think, and a lot of times though, we try to follow what existing channel there, there may have been as opposed to straightening out too much, which, um. But yeah, now we're, we're getting kind of downstream of nine, so it's collecting a lot of flow that we've opened up that had not been opened for eighty-plus years.
Twelve's not dumping into there yet.
Uh, correct, because it's not cleaned out, so. Some of these, I mean, talking to other engineers that have ditches in their purview, uh, this is what happens a lot of times when they open up a ditch that hasn't been open for a while, you inevitably find or see erosion, um, in places that most likely may need to be addressed at some point in the future, so.
Yeah, coming up towards the end of this ditch is where you do see the increased sediment flow and obviously it doesn't help with all the erosion, all that sediment going back into the ditch, but like Chris said, it's inevitable. Cause it's never, the ditches are never rarely dry, so it's hard to get vegetation in there after it's, after it's taken home.
Boy, that's funny. You can see why they meander that, yeah.
How long's it going to be before we have to clean that out?
Yeah, the branches of nine, so.
Turn it back. Kind of like a road turn back. Soon as they're clean, turn it back.
It's a, um, yeah, I mean, when it comes to erosion, it, it's a, it's a give and take. To get the, the water to move equals velocity. Velocity is what causes erosion though, um, so now we're really really moving now, so. So, yeah, I just wanted to share just the information, know that we have tools and the abilities to, um, look at this and see a lot of the ditch in a short amount of time. And then, um, sometimes it causes us to, we see things in the aerial that we may have to go out and, let's say, ground truth, if you will, and go get boots on the ground to look at it. But that's just what we had prepared for, um, nine and fourteen today. We've got more to come, more videos to, to come. And hopefully we'll have a whole inventory, video inventory of all of our ditches before too much longer now that we have Adam on board. Something honestly, Commissioners, I just did not have the time to, to get accomplished and I'm, I'm happy that we're able to get that done now, so.
Good job.
Yep, great, great information. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Members, anything else on ditch authority, Chris?
That's all I have.
Adam, you have anything?
No, I appreciate you guys' time and watching the video.
All right.
It's cool. That was really good.
That was good. All right, with that, we'll adjourn the ditch authority meeting at ten forty-three and turn it back to the board chair.
Go back to Commissioner meeting updates. Who wants to start?
I can, um, I had, uh, we had our C I P board meeting that you all were at. We had our call on the twelfth. Um, I went with, um, with Steve and Chris to the Capitol on May thirteenth. We met with six House of Representatives, six senators, and we actually also met with, uh, Senate Tax Committee Administrator. I thought it was a very good, um, uh, thing. And then I had a Midtownship meeting that night when I got back and I attended a Zoom meeting for MICA on five fourteen. And then I had city council meeting last night.
Okay, uh, I had that W G O N interview. We had career solutions. Let's see, oops, I got to get back to my calendar here.
Oh, I guess I left career.
Yeah, we had, and we had criminal justice meeting. Uh, I think I, hopefully I brought the right notes.
Two different meetings. One was on Zoom and one was on GoTo.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, only, nobody was on mine.
No. Forty-one inmates, five on humor. Six of the forty-one inmates were females. They're doing speedy hearings, twenty-eight days.
In person, in person?
Yeah.
So we're up about ten inmates, is that what you're saying?
That's what it says, yep. Uh, let's see, that's about all for that. And if I miss something, I know Jared will.
I, I, going back to the inmates, maybe what we should have them do is give us, because that's a snapshot of that day.
Correct.
So, yeah. Give an average.
Average, average, yeah.
Average for the month or whatever, yeah, which was really nice. Uh, let's see here, yeah, we had human services meeting, uh, went to the Capitol. That was a great day. Man, we ran into everybody. I mean, everything worked.
Thank you guys again for going. Appreciate that.
Very good, especially with transportation. That was very good of funding. Uh, let's see, what did I have yesterday? I don't remember what I had yesterday. I'm sorry, but that's about all. Thank you.
Okay. Jared?
Okay, I had the A P O meeting. We are gonna, uh, we got to talk about the, um, and I'll put this on the next agenda. Monte is the, um, uh, agreement for the A P O, uh, basically for the belt line. So it's what we've all talked about. I've, I think I've brought it up in the past on committee updates. But it's just the, the cost share of the first phase of the, um, environmentals. So, um, let's see, uh, I had the A M C Finance Committee meeting. I had the A M C Futures. Um, the cow, uh, we had our airport meeting, which I don't think that's going to be as easy as we think. So, good information, but they're coming with a levy. They said that, that day, so.
They said that at the city council meeting last night too, brought up at the St. Cloud City Council.
Yeah.
Except St. Cloud isn't going to pay any of it.
Right.
Correct, and he told them that. Correct. And he told them that.
Yeah.
That's what I got.
As Roxanne mentioned, we had, did have a planning commission meeting on May eighth, and that was the only item on our agenda was the, um, campground information you guys received today, and we acted on, of course, our Human Services Cow. Uh, I was in attendance at Granite Ledge Township. They're looking at, I mean, their town hall, potentially mu- uh, picking it up, creating a new slab and setting the building on a new area. They had gone through some preliminary information already, and I just kinda highly suggested to them that they get David Barzoti involved as the building inspector to make sure that they're not missing something. They're gonna go through all this work and then have some red flags thrown at them. So then they asked if I'd come up and meet with that, too, which I did, but I just was there to listen. Um, they maybe, uh, he, uh, Arnie even said, did ask me if the board would consider, um, waiving, uh, their permit fees. Um, and I said, you can always appeal that to the board. I can't answer that for you, um, but at the end of the day, the permit still has to be paid for somehow, shape or form. So if they decide to approach us, you're not surprised by that. Um, I did attend the pre-bid conference, uh, here in the boardroom on the thirteenth. Monte, maybe twelve to fifteen contractors here. Took about thirty, forty minutes. Good general questions. Was pretty simple and straightforward, so, um, and that's all I had.
Yeah, well, I had the Cow and then, um, I skipped the MICA, I was busy, and then the airport. Um, you got the email from the airport. I didn't think, he had two general questions that we asked. I thought we asked a lot more than two general questions.
Well, I think they were the two main ones, but there was a lot of, lot of conversation. It's just, it's gonna be, gonna be very tough.
Do you have another meeting set?
Not yet.
Not yet, but they're gonna meet again. Uh, hopefully we can maybe get Sherburne County to meet with us.
At the end of it, Saint Cloud is out.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes four people to get us out of this agreement.
They'll never let us out.
Saint Cloud has nothing to gain by getting out.
Yeah.
And the, the only good thing we got is I think the, the regime has changed in Saint Cloud, so they, at least, we got, we got an ability to talk to them about, because it's gonna take everybody to make this airport work.
I think they did get a little bit of the clue that, you know, if things don't go the right way, we can stack that board with people that don't agree with what the airport wants to see. And we want the airport to succeed. We just don't want them to be what they, the way they wanna go about it.
Did they commit to a million dollar levy this year?
They said, when I was leaving, they said they were bringing that forward.
Benton County's portion is hundred and thirty-five thousand? Do we know that?
We have no idea what our portion is right now. It's somewhere.
It's been a long time since I saw those numbers.
Yeah. And when do they have to have that to us by?
They, they would call the safe schedule.
So September.
So it's posed in September.
But unless we get all the parties to the table and renegotiate this deal, when s- after five years, I think it is, when Saint Cloud is, is completely off, we lose all police support, all fire support, all, everything, and the airport has to pay for that.
And the six hundred grand.
And the six hundred grand that they're giving now. Now, their people do come back on the levies. The Saint, the City of Saint Cloud does at that point come back on the levies, but it, it's a tough scenario.
So who's gonna make the decision how the Saint Cloud Airport Authority levy's gonna show up on property tax statements? Auditor treasures? Are we gonna make that decision? Because the people in the county are gonna wanna know what that line item's for.
Okay.
Because I foresee it, in my opinion, it should say STC Airport Authority. I don't think we should hide it in the.
That's a good point.
In the total levy dollars.
That's a good point.
County residents need to see what that Airport Authority levy's gonna cost.
Yeah, it's gonna be separated out.
Yep, a solid way, sir.
It's gonna be similar because it's a special taxing district. So it would be separate issues. How is it labeled? And I'll ask Christine.
Well, and the reason I ask that, because I understand after talking to some other Commissioners in other counties, that their auditor treasurer is not going to do a line item with it. And I think if we have a choice, that's the wrong way to go.
Yeah. Because then it looks like we're just levying from the county again. Once again, one point six million in, in total debt to this county, and with everybody else levying, we're the ones taking the beating.
I get the impression if, if, if we can give Christine any thoughts, it might be, we, you'd like to see it separated.
Listed. I would. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, no, listed.
We say Regional, Saint Cloud Regional Authority.
Yes.
The other part, the FBO, I think, has got some, you know, they got, what, seven years left? They had a twenty-year lease with the FBO, and he would never answer how much they're actually making the, what they say, Cloud Aviation.
For fuel, you mean?
For, there's more than that. There's like maintenance.
There's maintenance.
There's a lot of things that they're doing.
Storage.
And it, it sounds like, well, they've made an offer to buy them out, but they haven't, he hasn't accepted or even listened to their proposal yet. But if they buy them out, I think there's money, there's probably a fair amount of money there that can help the airport. And as they get down.
Until Saint Cloud dissipates from the agreement.
Yeah.
Then we're back to square one, because you look at what they're giving, let's just say it's six hundred and twenty thousand with no escalator, then you got, then you got the police and fire and all that stuff. That, I mean, all that stuff is probably three hundred grand. Call it a million bucks. Even if that FBO is making a million bucks, that just takes care of that.
Yeah.
This is an example that he gave with his presentation yesterday. He said that they're looking at a one million dollar tax levy. Four hundred and fifteen would go into operating expenses and five hundred and eighty-five would go into capital. And then he said on a two hundred thousand dollar home, um, there would be, uh, four point four one, um, annual tax increase, so four dollars and forty-one cents or forty cents a month. And on a three hundred dollar home, it would be seven dollars and twenty-one cents annual tax, which would be fifty-five cents a month per homeowner. That's what he gave for.
But Monte, when they get that formula figured out, it's based off each county's tax capacity, isn't it?
Yes.
So ours is roughly fifty-five million, plus or minus?
Right.
Are, that's, um, close, yeah.
We should be the smaller portion of that.
We should, yes.
We are the smallest portion.
But the fact of the matter is, it's still additional levy.
Still.
And then they.
I'll ask Christine and maybe I'll set the limits to Christine.
The other part that they were negotiating is that this, this lease runs out in seven years, and they would like to buy them out, and the Saint Cloud Aviation, whoever owns that, at the end of seven years, gets nothing for their, their buildings, their, you know, the equipment and that. They have all their, all goes to the airport. So they.
Anything that can't be removed.
Anything that can't be removed. So that might be one of the things that'll be a little bit of a savings there, but I don't know, so. Anyway, it was interesting, and we only had two counties that participated, so.
How many from the airport?
Two.
Two.
You didn't get all three counties to?
Sherburne went because they wanted Saint Cloud there.
Comments, general comments? Topic's not required board action. I've got some stuff. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I think it's, it's very important that we stay true to our votes. We stay true to our actions up here. I think people are looking for honesty. People are looking for us to do the best for the county. It's been a, for me, it's been a, a, a tough few weeks. I mean, y- you know, I'm never gonna disagree with somebody else's opinion or vote or anything like that, because everybody's got their own reason they're doing it. But, but where I mean being true to our vote or being true to our opinion is giving some background on how we got to that point. And that's gotta be, that, 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 that is so key in this whole deal. And Mr. Chair, this may seem kinda tough on you, but I'm gonna tell you, you, uh, just with the building side of things, you were with us on the whole way through, and there was never a no vote.
Right. Except I wanted to pause it like two months ago, whenever all the.
But you didn't vote no at that point.
No, we never had a vote after.
Yeah, we did.
We most certainly did. We voted to approve the extended contract with GLT.
Extend it?
Yes. And, and I, I a hundred percent, uh, I'm, I'm fine with the no vote. It's how we got to that point. And that's what bothers me is, we sit up here and, and there's no more money to be spent on getting the numbers, and we, we, we said that night, matter of fact, Mr. Chair, I asked you, I said, so are you saying this is pretty much done? And you said, yeah. And I'm like, I said, all we're doing is, is voting for a funding mechanism. The vote comes later on, you know, and, and I'm sitting here going, this board, and I'm, I'm gonna speak for, for the, the three newest people, and, and Steve, you're not too far behind us. You're only two years behind us. Can we agree that you're the most tenured eleven, eleven years? You gotta answer a lot of these questions that your own constituents have. Why are the buildings falling apart? Why, what happened to the Airport Authority? Hold on here. What happened to the Airport Authority?
Yeah.
The ditches.
The ditches, the ditches are never on the current board. There was never a petition. There was never anything brought up. Twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Is the first time. They, this goes way beyond when I even got here.
But, but you, you look at it, this board has been tasked, all we hear is, for the last how many years, we've been saving taxes, we've been saving tax, we've been saving. This board is being absolutely punished by things that, that people have done six and eight years and ten years before us. Punished. Class and Comp was started before we got in.
Right.
You know, um, the H two O overviewers were started before we got in. Yes. There was, there was a lot of things down that, down, down that, the Airport Authority, which I've been very vocal on, has, was, was voted on before I got in and before, you know. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's so many things that, you know, and even, even Mr. Chair, you brought up the resolution about, you know, get back to work, right? I took a beating down at the AMC Board when, and you sat up on a panel and said hindsight, we should have stayed in our own lane. That's not being true to your vote. I mean, I, to this day, stand by my vote and says, I will do that against red, blue, purple, green, white, everything. Because I, I truly believe, look at where we're at today. They didn't get the job done. You know, you know, now, not saying they would have got it done or anything like that, but th- there's, there's battles that are way beo- way beyond us.
I, I think.
But, no, and, 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 you know, you look at, we got absolutely punished by trying to get actual numbers for this building.
Well, that's brutal.
Well, we got punished on the opposite side for ditches, for not having the numbers. Yeah, because we sent out estimates.
Yeah.
So we got punished on both sides.
Ditches, ditches are individually, I mean, the, the ditch authority has to deal with them, but.
Yeah.
Which is this board.
You know, and.
Individual people have to realize that not everybody, not every portion of the county has to deal with ditches.
Well, there's, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of people, uh, dealing with them. So I, I, I'm gonna keep going, because there's, there's been a lot weighing on my mind on this, and, you know, you look at, you look at people talking about, you know, the levies and we can't afford this, we can't, nobody showed up to the, very few people showed up to any of the school district stuff, and we're getting absolutely killed on all that. Sock Rapids, they, they have a shortfall of, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars after just passing a fifty-some million dollar levy? You know, all of this rides on us, the cost shifts, and, and we, we're sitting here at one point six million dollars, low man on the totem pole, if you will, and we got, and, and we got aging buildings. So I, I'm gonna stay back to what, what I said. We need to take care of these buildings so our people have something to work in, so we can serve the public. That money doesn't go away. We heard it from constituents that we should have a savings plan. We don't do things without savings or, um, a slush fund. We heard it from multiple people. So I'm going to push for a one and a half million dollar levy this year to start building that up. I just didn't think people wanted to pay for this before they actually get it. But that's not what we heard from the room. People would rather pay for things and have the money in pocket and go pay for it.
Yes.
Would, did we not hear that?
We heard that, but, so just, I mean, that money isn't on a tree.
No, we got a levy for it.
On top of everything else we're gonna levy for. So we're back to levying.
Yeah. We're gonna have to put five to seven hundred thousand dollars into these buildings next year.
Now, you haven't touched on your savings account.
We haven't touched on our savings account. So we're looking at a million and a half to two million dollar levy.
Well, I'd like to have somebody show me that, some county that does savings accounts, because I think the taxpayers will ask it.
Well, you go to a, uh, but there's probably, what, ninety-five percent of the people that go to a car dealership don't go there with cash.
Yeah, right.
And they, they walk away with the car. I don't think they're, they're sitting there telling the dealership, here's, here's five hundred bucks a month, I'll be back in four years. You know what I mean? But, but that's, I, I mean, no matter, I guess where I'm going with this is no matter what, I don't think we got it across to the taxpayers. That's something's gotta happen.
Well, I think so.
But.
Where's the money gonna come from?
I don't, I don't think they think about that, but they gotta, they know something's gonna have to happen somewhere, somehow.
Again, where is the money gonna come from? We're gonna levy it.
Yeah.
That's our, that's where it's coming from. We don't have savings account. I had somebody address me that day, well, what about the two million cash you're gonna do? You know where that came from? Monte, you can correct me. We spend ninety-seven percent plus or minus of our budget every year. We don't hit it exactly, right? And so when there's excess funds, what do we do with it? We put it in reserves.
Yes.
That's where this two million in cash comes.
Yes, exactly.
Levy extra.
No.
For this fund.
No, there has been no explicit levy for that, no.
Okay, so, back, back to my point, where's it coming from?
The tax.
We're gonna levy it.
But I mean, some of our excess funds comes from open positions over the years.
Yep, I understand that. But if you're gonna establish a savings account for a future building project, where's it coming from? It's gonna get levied.
Yeah.
It's that simple. We have no other source of funds.
No, and, and, and if you look at it, we wouldn't be bonding or levying for this until twenty-seven if the building went through. I say we start right now in twenty-six, building that savings account, because in, if this goes to the tax, you know, to, to the election, and let's just say all the stars lined and it, it gets approved, then we got, if we do a million and a half, million and a half, and by the time we build the building, another million and a half, we got, we got, you know, six, seven million dollars to put down, which in all honesty, is probably gonna eat up, be eaten up a lot by the additional cost to get to that point.
Commissioner Kowinski, though, if you're talking about, Monte said it before, we've got a five percent levy with our class and comp.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right out of the gate.
Yeah.
Before we do anything.
Anything.
Now, if you're gonna put on another million and a half, you got another seven and a half percent.
Yeah.
So we're twelve and a half percent levy.
And we haven't talked about keeping up the buildings yet.
Yeah, or, or just to maintain.
Yeah.
I, I just think we have to be a little more transparent in our discussions of how, how we feel, okay, in which direction we're going individually, instead of out of the blue it happens, you know, or getting thrown under the bus certain times. We just gotta do a better job individually as a board to relay all of this stuff upfront and honest.
Well, and I agree, Commissioner Heinand, I just wanna be clear on the transparency thing. You're, you're talking about transparency and how we each feel about those things.
Correct.
Because we've been very transparent.
Correct. That is correct.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep, no, I was just talking about the board in general, not everything that was done, so I didn't.
Yeah, and I, you know, it, it's, it's a tough situation. I, in, 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 Mr. Chair, one of the things that really set me off last, or the other week, was your last comment when you walked off the board, when you said you can't believe that this board wants to tax, raise taxes.
They don't wanna raise taxes.
I don't wanna raise taxes.
I don't either.
But you said that.
I didn't say I can't believe this board wants to raise taxes. I said, I don't believe that the county, the.
You can't believe the county wants to raise taxes.
The county can afford to have that kinda tax increase today.
Yeah, well, I, 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 I think we can agree to disagree on, on what was said. That's why I got upset and left, because I, I was, nobody up here wants to raise taxes. We pay the same thing. And I'm gonna tell you, everybody talks about the farmers. I get it, but the farmers are a business. They're their own business. It's no different than somebody owns Knife River, something like, you know, they, they got their own business and you pay business taxes. They're their own business. It's no different than somebody owns Knife River, something like, you know, they, they got their own business and you pay business taxes. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now, if my, if my house, I think I can get three hundred grand for it. If I go sell it for four hundred grand, I'm gonna one hundred percent take that extra hundred grand because the additional taxes over the thirty, forty years I might owned it is gonna be peanuts compared to what I got on that. Same thing per acre of land. We're creating our own issue by overpaying for land.
No, that's, that was brought forth to me about that comment that you had made some other time about farmers create that. Most of them are, are buying additional acres or additional farming because they need to spread their cost of equipment and that over larger acres. It's not because they, they want to, it's because they have to in order to survive.
Well, as a business, we have to do the same thing.
Any business does. Yeah, any business does. That's the cost, that's the economics of it.
But part of that, part of that argument got to be is, I think we said, if you own, if you own a hundred acres and you've lived there your whole lifetime and you can sell it for twelve grand, shouldn't you be able to?
If you stayed, yes, should you?
You should, you should, right? I think everybody agrees on that, but the fact of the matter is that just creates an issue for the land that I own next door.
And the neighbors.
And the neighbors. And all of our land values go up.
Yep. And then we got a lot of people here upset at us because taxes are, are high.
You know, you, it's kinda hard because you wanna accept the money you're provided, which you should. I'm not gonna sit here and say you shouldn't take that. If you can get twenty grand for it, so be it. But the rest of us have to realize that's an effect on everybody.
And if you don't know that, you shouldn't be.
And if you got, if you got certain people out there that are buying up all this land and, and then talking out of other sides of their mouth, it's like, holy cow, what do we do? We can't, we're not here at the table with, with you buying the land for eight thousand dollars an acre when other people can only afford six? You know, it, it, it's a catch twenty-two and, and we're catching all the twenty-two shells up here. And I'm, it, it gets, it gets old. And that's where I'm saying, we need to be true to ourselves. We are elected to be true to everybody. And, and we gotta be, we, we gotta be transparent with, with everybody at these cows. And, and let everybody know, because I'm gonna tell you, if there would've been some no votes along the way, you know, I, I would've, I would've been like, okay, I seen this comment, everything like that. Cuz no matter what, four to one, if we'd have kept going, we hadn't the no votes. But, you know, to get to the point where we didn't have to spend money to see the final outcome. I, I, I'm, cuz if, if this referendum goes, which I, I believe it will, the reverse referendum, it goes to the, it goes to the, the election. How nice would that be able to, be able to say, oh, the bids came in at twenty-eight million? We have a starting point for that building and we know what it should cost. If, if this reverse referendum came in before that or we voted that down, we don't get to see that and we're back to square one. I'm guessing what the numbers are.
Correct.
And that, to me, is a disservice to a lot of people in our county that not even knowing what that is.
Well, and I would say it's a disservice, I mean, this board on a five to nothing vote approved one point three million to get to where we're at today.
Correct.
It's that simple.
Yep.
I wasn't on the board then, but.
In this particular case, you were part of the vote.
Right.
Yes, GLT contract. That's a disservice to me.
Well, and that's ultimately why I voted yes was because I want to see what those final numbers are. I wanna know what possible tariffs could be doing to that, whatever. I mean, ultimately, this board before I got on spent one point three million dollars to, on a building.
Actually, actually, I'm gonna correct you. We're only about seven hundred grand before you showed up.
Till you showed up. Thank you.
Sorry.
But at the end of the day, I think, I'm gonna leave my grand standing at this. We gotta agree to disagree or agree to agree, but at the end of the day, we gotta walk out cuz we still gotta work together moving forward. And we gotta let bygones be bygones, so that's all I got.
Any other comments? Set committee of the halls?
All right, well, you decided earlier to schedule budget presentations for all day on August twelfth and half day on August thirteenth. If I recall correctly, the thirteenth would be in the morning. Could be in the morning. So let's say eight to four thirty on the twelfth and then eight AM to noon on the thirteenth. And that would cover all of our departments and outside agencies. And Chris suggested to you a road tour. A road tour.
Yeah, how about we all cram into a small van together and ride around the county? Traditionally, we do a road tour, you know, this time of year, May or June. Is the board interested in doing that? First, I mean, let's, we can have a discussion whether we wanna do that.
I'd like to go.
I would too.
Can, could we do it? What do you think doing it when we get County Road Seven done?
Seven, we'll be, well, possibly, I mean, we have a, a date of July. So, I mean, if the board would like to, we could push it that far out. I would expect that we'd probably have to wait till later of July before seven is completed. Yeah.
Have you made a decision if you're paving Casade Seven this year or not? Or are you gonna leave it sit?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna do a portion, as early as next week, we probably pave in what we did last year.
Okay.
So all of it, um, won't have a, a pay, even a base course until July, probably. So.
I'm open to whenever it works for everybody, but I'd like to go.
So, Chris, I'm sorry, yeah, on, on this tour, are you gonna show us the bad roads? Are you gonna show what's in our five-year plan? We could do. What is, what are your thoughts on this?
All that. I mean, I think traditionally, probably a mix of both, you know, considering time and, and not trying to eat up a whole, too much of a day. Probably hit some roads that are on a five-year plan. Sometimes I like to hit some things that aren't, you know, that we're aware of and that, you know, just as time and resources and funding allows, we are aware of that we just can't get to. I like to somehow show that.
I, I definitely think we should, there's been a lot of discussion, for example, about is it paving, reconstructing, is it twenty-five?
Yeah.
That'd be a great stretch to review and also fifty.
Yeah, those are.
These ones have been talked about a lot the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Those two in particular.
I mean, I like to think of it as your tour. What would you guys like to see? Heavily, um, like to see, rely on your input too, so.
In the past, do you guys typically do a full tour of all roads?
No.
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 We'll spend, we'll spend what, three, four hours?
How about three, four hours?
You know, here four hours, we'll pick out.
A half a day, half a day, yeah.
You know what might be good is to see the progression of a road. So where I'm going with this is do something that's been done in the last one or two years. Do something that's like eight, nine years and something towards the end of life and you can, you can start seeing like things that are happening that. Sure. You know what I mean? Yeah.
Maybe like a Sasa seven under reconstruction and like he said, Casade twenty-five and fifty, I mean, roads we've talked about. Casade nine might be another one, overlaid that down by the gravel pits, right?
Yes, yeah. You, in the past, it's been about three to four hours. I don't know if it's something like, we could even throw out, you know, multiple days. I mean, we do one in June, do one later this summer and break it up or, you like to just, you know, hit it hard and do one long morning or something, so.
I think we can do one long morning.
Mm-hmm, one long morning. Are you gonna ask? Are we thinking maybe wait till later in July or something?
Later, yeah, August would be really tough.
Yeah, if we get into August, we're gonna be.
Yeah, I guess in September, yeah.
Or Mondays are better or Fridays better? Mondays. Avoid the, okay?
July seventh.
July seventh is a good Monday. I have nothing on my calendar.
But you won't have it paved by then, will you?
Um, I don't know at this point.
But if you looked at the twenty-first.
They've made good progress up until this week, so.
Could we pencil the twenty-first in and then just confirm it when it gets closer or?
We could, we, we, that's far enough out that we can.
For everybody.
Yeah, we could set that and then certainly we have a couple meetings in June to come back to, to talk about it and if we need to adjust it, so.
Are you talking May twenty-first?
No, July twenty-first. Maybe this is a placeholder, though. We don't really wanna put it on the committee of the whole yet, do we? Cuz if we change that.
We can, we can always change it.
Change it, okay.
At eight AM, eight AM ruffling?
Yeah.
Right, so that's all we have then.
Really?
Motion to set the committees of the hall?
Second.
That's been made in second. Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.